Do you put it on your windshield?
Back window. I think they could have maybe just a little bit smaller on those.
You barn or you don't?
On his skin. Skin, that's kind of interesting.
Okay, six o'clock, here to bring the meeting to order. We're gonna review an improvement for the August 2nd meeting.
Make motion approve the minutes for August 2nd.
Meeting. Uh, second. Okay, open for discussion. Any discussion or changes on the minutes?
Tough with your tax bill.
Okay, on my favor, accepting the minutes as posted for August 2nd meeting. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, minutes approved. Adjustments in the agenda?
Yeah, and we need to add the NVDA representative. And we need to add a discussion for Matt Nun's work for a couple items that have come up that need repair. And then, we have Fire and Fast, Wade is here, he needs to be first to look through his stuff.
We'll move him right to the top of the list as long as everybody else is good with that.
Yep. And then... Do you want the others on the end, or we'll put them right after that?
Let's just do it right after that, how's that sound?
Perfect.
Okay, good, let's do that. So, Wade, we're gonna, you know, we talked on the phone, it's about the fire station roofing project, blah blah blah. Tell me what, tell me what the plan is, or what you know, or what...
Well, we're now, we got, one of the particular things, we got a furnace room that the roof is about to collapse in, so...
Okay.
If anything, we've gotta get that, that's gotta be dealt with.
Okay.
The other major project, the problem is, is time. Because I'm talking to Steve previously, got asked him last night, so what's your time element if we have to do a, you know, to go with a bid? Go through the process, I says, you know, what are we looking at for time? He says, you know, to make it to fall full weather.
For him.
Because you gotta order the stuff, you're gonna have a lift, or...
So, the only problem that I kind of had with the project was, is we've never heard anything about this all summer long, and then all of a sudden, it seemed like there was a bunch of work done to put it together, but then it didn't really, it didn't meet the process that we do in order to do that. So then, we're kind of like, well, okay, we gotta kind of figure out what needs to be done and what's going on, and then do it the way that it needs to be done, so that we follow the sidelines in our, in our system. So that's kind of how this is all got to be where it's at today. So what, so what can we do to move it along?
You gotta go by your processes, there ain't much you can do but follow the process. I mean, unless, unless there's, unless there's an option out of that.
Well, I guess, so my concern was, is if it was, if it was an emergency project, which now it's kind of sounding like it's an emergency project, right? Then somebody would've come to us and said, hey, we have an emergency problem here that we need to get dealt with. But, but it didn't really come across like that, so that's why I'm trying to figure out, okay, what do we do now?
I guess the assumption was, they wanted to get the project in the hand, that would've took care of that emergency, that would've took care of that whole problem, because I know what you're saying.
I know, but nobody even said that to us, and said, hey, we've got a problem.
No, I know, but like I said, the project has actually been talked about the last year, but it was just since, it's been just since this last spring, they wanted to push it. Because one of the things was, when we started looking at it, it was supposed to have been the furnace room at the beginning, the roof, and then they kept looking at the main roof, and the screws are popping, starting to pop out, then they said add to that.
Which I'm not arguing with them, just saying, hey, how come we weren't up to date on this project and brought in on it? And then all of a sudden, it's like, okay, well, okay, we can go this route, but we still have to follow the process, or we have to figure out where to go from here. So that's where we're at. So, now, we need to figure out how we're gonna deal with it.
Have you put it out to bid?
Not yet.
Can it go out?
I mean, if you're talking about after this, after what's happened, no, yeah.
Okay.
But, if you're going by what, what, I mean, like I said, it's beside the point. We, like I said, I'm just talking about what Brett, you know, they went, they went to all the vendors that they had, that he knew of, and they just had too much work, there was no way they're gonna...
Which, I get that, but I wish somebody had come to the board and said, hey, listen, we're in, we didn't know anything about this that, you know, that I know of. Aaron did, I don't know, maybe you did, but...
It's been an ongoing project, I think, which is what, you know, Wade had said. It's, I mean, that's part of the problem, is it was kicked around for a year, discussed, and then kind of put on a Band-Aid, all right, well, we're getting close, you know, it's July, let's get this done.
Okay.
So, that's when it all happened, yeah, like I said, just kind of...
Did you come out the last minute?
Yeah, we're running out of time, so...
Okay, so what do you, what do you think, Zach? What do I mean, what do you guys think, what are you gonna do here?
I think, you know, obviously, what was brought to the board last meeting, didn't follow the procurement process, the perfection policy of town, and we need to follow that. I know that there's a necessity to get this work done, I can completely appreciate that, but we need to make sure that we're following those policies, and that's the check and balance for making sure that the budgets maintain property properly, so that we're taking care of stuff, so I guess my, I guess the question is, is what's the next steps from here? I mean, we kind of know what the problem is, we know the scope, and what needs to get fixed, and, you know, where are we doing from here, is the question.
Dan?
Brett had me go over and check it for a permit back in July.
Okay.
And I can tell you that if that furnace room does collapse, we're looking at a much bigger project than what is now.
Okay.
And the roof is, has real problems. So, it would be in the best interest, for the least amount of cost, to get it taken care of as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Because if that does collapse, there's gonna be a tremendous amount of damage done with that.
So, everybody knew about this project, except the board. So, 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 that being said, how are we gonna get somebody to fix it, I guess? I'm, I'm not sure who you are, but you have your hand up.
I'm the regional planner from Northeastern Formant Film Association.
Okay.
I know I'm on the agenda, but that is why I'm here potentially, is the municipal technical assistance program.
Okay.
It's a, it's a small budget program for specific projects, one of them being community recovery.
Okay.
This sounds like that might fall into it, it's a, it's a quick bucket...
Well, we're not necessarily concerned about the money part of it, we have money for our building improvements. The problem that we had was putting it out to bid and finding a contractor to do it in the process that we have set up for the town, and so on and so forth. So, we didn't, it didn't follow that process, so now we're trying to figure out, okay, so how do we move forward? And there's been some discussion on it, and it's kind of like, okay, if we put a thing in the ad, okay, in the paper, right? So, and it goes out, what, I don't know the whole process, so how long does it take?
I think it's 30 days, I think it has to be about 30 days.
Too late, isn't it?
No, I mean, I think if we get it out tomorrow, I don't, it doesn't need to be too late, does it?
It would be in the paper next week, and then you'd have to have a deadline to have the bids in by.
Right.
Then you gotta figure out...
Which means, at that point, we're not, we're pushing that out to the first meeting in October, and not next select board meeting at this point.
Well, if they act on it and they do the bid...
Right, no, I mean, yeah, yeah. Because the deadline for the bridge is already passed for this week, right?
Right.
So, I mean...
It'll be next week.
We put it out next week, and we put it out for bids for a week, then we're talking, you know, that, that puts it out till after the next select board meeting, September meeting, and then...
It could hit the September 27th meeting. Because I think we were bumping, because of fall foliage, we were bumping September's one more week, and...
I think it would line up actually perfectly.
Okay.
So you'd have the bids to open on September 27th.
Okay, so can we do that?
I don't know if that gives enough time.
Who's, who knows what the project needs to be and can outline?
I'd have to talk to Brett.
Okay, well, so I mean, I thought Brett and Steve were here at the last meeting, kind of explained what that looked like, I don't know...
But then we got an email from Steve, and he didn't want any part of it, because blah blah blah, so on and so forth, and he was working on this.
I'll have to listen, yeah.
So I, I don't know what...
Yeah, I mean, to follow the process, you gotta put it out to bid.
Right. So it needs to work.
Yep, yeah, so that's the next step, so...
So if we had the information, tomorrow we could get it possibly into the bridge for next week, as far as Thursday.
Yeah.
Or hold your cutoff.
In the fourth meeting, or whatever it is on Thursday.
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to give me what exactly the specs are, and have information in the office.
Yeah.
So, I guess, who's gonna be the primary point of contact for questions about the project, when we put it out to bid?
IG, wouldn't it?
Either Wade or, I mean, Aaron's, Aaron has a select board member, and I run the Fire and Fast, and could probably...
Well, Brent's been working on the project, right? And Brent should probably be able to...
Yeah, Brent could be too, I mean...
Could just be Brent's email at the bottom of the ad, say, for questions.
And then I think we, you know, he, yeah, that, I mean, I would say it's roof repair replacement, right, for the fire, fire station.
For details.
For details, you know, yeah, email.
Because you know...
Or if you can get something to the office, we could put the number to call the office and put information that I could tell someone.
We put the deadline as what, that if it goes out on the 15th, the deadline would be the 22nd? And we don't have bids on the 27th? So that would be, you know, it'd be...
Well, you say, open by 5:00, the 27th, we've done half the project.
Yeah, that's fine.
Give a little bit more time.
That's fine, yeah, because we, as long as we've got bids for the meeting, that's what we, what we need.
And have it on the agenda.
Yep.
Okay.
As long as you can get something going.
Well, I mean, I, I can, I can always say we should've, could've, wouldn't, and we didn't, and so now, or this is where we're at, and this is the way that we have to solve the problem, so...
Right, I mean, we haven't had a SLU meeting in five weeks, the bid could've been put in and done for tonight.
Right, yeah, and, you know, I think what it comes down to is especially, you know, what it sounds like, this is not just, it's not just, you know, Wade, it's not just the fire department, it's like town policy, we know we've got big projects coming up, let's, let's get that, let's get that together, let's get, you know, let's get the right things in the right places, because, I mean, honestly, we could've, we could've put this out to bid in January, February, it sounds like, and earlier in the year too, so it's one of those things, we shouldn't wait till it's a dire emergency before we have to fix things, you know? And that, again, that goes for highway, it goes for library, it goes for everybody, you know? Let's not wait till the last minute to try to get things worked on.
So Wade, are you going to leave stuff in the office for the ad, put something together, or...
I'll have to, I'll have to get ahold of Brent, and he's got, between him and Steve, I've always information needed for that roof, so...
Okay, so I'll need it tomorrow by 3:00.
I mean, even if it's not all the details, just something writing a little ad, and then they can reach out for more details.
So I'll try to get ahold...
Well, we know what the plan is, is to build the roof, oh, to come down, and...
I'll reach out to that.
Would you say repair?
I'll reach out, happy.
I won't be home until late, so...
Good luck in the morning.
Good.
You wanna take care of that, Aaron?
I'll get ahold of him, have him, yeah.
Because we've got all the information, so...
Okay, all right.
I'll go to meeting.
So, you sent me an email with updates...
Do you want us to read it, Aaron, Fire and Fast?
I'll just read it, sorry, Fire and Fast. Or unless you know what you sent me for an email.
No, I know, I know, it's a list of things.
Okay, we'll discuss it.
Just like I said, it's a list of things that we can, that's ongoing, what we're doing, and...
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You? Okay, so, NVDA rep, and your name is?
Jesse.
Jesse?
Yep.
Okay, Jesse, so, and maybe this has some funding for this roof project, but it's not, it's not necessarily about the funding, it's about the process to get the job done.
Well, so this is a state-led funding program, like a one-time, need-based opportunity for rural communities.
Okay.
It's still a little wishy-washy, even on the amount, I believe it's anywhere between 2,500 and 5,000, which is not that much in the grand scheme of things. They're very specific to if there are any projects within the town that need to come up, where we could help with project management, or permit assistance, grant administration, or applications, so if it's...
I'm sure we have projects, then, but, yeah.
Talking about the fencing.
Like I said too, they're very specific, we've come up with multiple projects for towns, and they don't qualify, so that's where the kind of friction is with this program. So I'll go through the shortlist, and if you have anything, I can make notes, and...
Okay.
Any housing projects that the town's currently going through?
Nope.
Water, wastewater?
Nope.
Well, the drainage.
But that's all people's, that's USDA.
Yes, USDA and ARPA, so it's a big project.
Water, wastewater.
Yeah.
Community recovery projects, from the flooding perhaps, or anything prior?
Not really.
No.
No, most recent flooding.
Energy, climate resilience, anything of retrofitting municipal buildings, or anything like that?
We just applied for the MERC grant.
Oh, that, okay. Just wanted to know.
All right.
And then beyond that, do you have a kind of a go-to, top priorities for the town that I can report as well?
Well, we're working on our drainage project out here, that we've been working on for a few years now.
Drainage in the parking lot.
Drainage in the parking lot, paving, and...
Is that just around the building?
Yeah, this whole building.
We're making ADA compliant parking, and the parking lot is sinking, better, you know, fix it.
Yep.
Okay, is that part of like the Better Roads project, or anything like that?
No, 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 it's completely...
We have ARPA money, and then we got a grant from USDA, got your lady there.
Do you know where your progress is on the ARPA funding?
While we're getting towards, hopefully this spring, we're gonna be going out there to do the project. Yeah.
As far as like the total funds, are you happy, are you, what's at your mark?
Should be.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other projects that you can think of?
Well, we, we're working on, you know, we work on our park, you know, upgrading our park every year. We did some lighting upgrades last year, we cut trees another year. This year, we're gonna have a guy coming about fencing, trying to see about fences, about fencing, and we made, you know, upgrade our ball fields, we did some gravel work, and we need some more fence gate work done in the, in the ball field. What else do we have? There's some different culverts, but that's...
Yeah, it's all that little stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I potentially mark that progress?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
To see what, see what could shake out from that?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Okay, and it sounds like the quality of roads are pretty good, or have you seen maintained?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Really? And then last question I have, does the town have any unfilled positions, or positions that are...
Yep.
Yep.
We do, uh, we have...
Why, do you live in rotten? We'd be happy to.
So, Secretary for the Select Board, we have a position open for that, what else do we have?
Nothing major, but...
Planning to stay old, Rec could probably use, always use more people. Library has got all their trustees right now.
And, I mean, there's all, there's gonna be more and more positions that we need people for as people retire, and stuff like that. Dorothy, you need more help in your position?
I need an assistant, assistant, assistant.
We're great.
Okay.
All right. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you, Jesse.
Yeah, thank you for your time, I'll reach out, just to give a little report.
Okay, that'd be great.
Have a little more contacts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Okay, so, Matt Nun, and we had kind of discussed, discussed some of this stuff, because of the light bulbs, and trying to find somebody that can do the light bulbs, yeah, so, Lisa.
So, he came in, and I talked to him about, I know he has a lift, and he said he had, would put staging in on the gym floor, so the lift wouldn't hurt the floor, and he can change all the light bulbs, and he gave a price. And then, he noticed that the gazebo, and we've been noticing the gazebo needs to be painted, and gravel put around it to help with the splash up and rotting. So those are the two prices, and, you know, we had talked to Tristan about it, and so we got prices on those.
I hadn't seen the prices, what are...
$16.50 for both projects. $250 bucks to...
To the lights, to the lights. But we would still buy the light bulb, right?
Oh, yes, yeah, I, we got one small box, and I've ordered another, and it's on its way. And he'll do it, that anytime, we just have to, go ahead.
How much is it for the light bulbs? $250.
And it's changing all the bulbs, and putting zip ties on all the grids, and put the staging.
The ones that have the blown bulbs, the cages need to come down, then reassemble, and you know, and we want, it's not very much fun to try, it's not safe.
No, on that ladder.
On that ladder, so it's not a very, and there's quite a bit of time in just changing the light bulbs, and how many lights, there was like four, five different lights?
I think I counted, it was like, I thought it was over 20 bulbs that needed to be replaced.
10.
It was 10. Yeah, I think there was a bunch.
And then all the, you have to go to every one of them to do the grids, the breaks.
Yeah, because of time line, so, yeah, I mean, I'm good with that. If we were to approve this, when was he thinking about the painting of the gazebo?
I asked him it could be done before fall foliage, because, you know, that was his mistake, and I think he said yes, I can't remember.
That would be good. That would be great, I mean, yeah, that would be good.
And the light bulbs, he can do before?
Yeah, he'll do that anytime, like soon.
Yeah.
He knows it has to be done before basketball starts.
So that would come out of two different things, because it would be, the light bulbs would fall under the gym.
Community building.
The gym would be...
The park.
Town property maintenance.
Yeah, town property maintenance.
There's 6,000 in that, property maintenance, and 1,400 in building repairs for the building.
It's a goal for me. I would say yes, on my end.
So, where would the painting come out of?
Town property maintenance.
Town property.
Town beautification, or...
Property upkeep.
Property, yep.
Okay. Do you remember what else we were wanting to do with, I mean, because...
Fencing.
That was a few...
Fencing, yes.
We talked about fencing, I got a guy coming tomorrow, gonna be with him morning to do a check. Be able to get the ball field, the gates and stuff, about doing...
Is that what we put in, in the budget for doing that?
Cover.
Yeah, I don't know if it's worth...
The frost field?
Yeah, I don't know what could be done. We can look at it, I guess, and then just do a...
Does he do fencing, or does he do backstop work and stuff too?
He does all fencing.
Yeah, probably would hurt to look at.
All right, we'll look at it, and then we're gonna look at this stretch of fencing down to the park. I almost wondered if we should go down and up each side, so it's like, it's enclosed, you know, type of thing, versus just the back.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, be good.
See, see what it...
We'll see what the prices is.
See what's always on the...
I mean, again, that's, some of that's probably not stuff that's gonna get done this year, right?
Not necessar, well, the ball field, the, we have...
Fixing the gates as well.
Yeah, that needs to be fixed. It's kind of, and the flood kind of pulled a lot of the fence down, it needs to be pulled back up and retaken.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know...
We do this project, we're only gonna have three grants left in that.
That's right.
Property maintenance, so...
Or property upkeep.
Property upkeep, yeah. So if it's fixing fences, gates for $900, we got money to do it, but if it's like a big project...
Right, the gate, that's not a big project, but to install a new fence would be a different story. We at least have some numbers to figure out what it's gonna cost to do that. I mean, maybe this year, we'll just get the ball field fixed and the gazebo thing, and then maybe next year, we could put the fence up.
Yeah, we'll know that it's gonna be $11,000, or whenever, day or night. Yeah.
So, I don't know.
We can just plan for that, I mean, that's...
Otherwise, if we wanna do the fence one, we do the gazebo, then we gotta put that up.
I think, I think, you know, now's the time to do the gazebos, before fall foliage, you can get an opportunity to do all that, so... So, yeah, I mean... I don't see why not.
Yeah. Make a mention to approve that. Bid from Matt Nun for $1,650.
As long as it's done before fall foliage.
It should be.
I'll second it.
Okay, on my favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I'm sure no frost building before fall foliage, but it'd be nice if it was done in stone, or whatever. And then, on that same thing, Steve's been working on, Steve Hart's been working on, he's the one that had asked me about doing the fencing work, and trying to fix the ball field, and then once he realized that it's a little bit over his head, and he said, well, maybe we could have somebody come do the maintenance on it. And he's gonna continue to do some more trimming down to the park, and cutting bushes back, and making it look good at his discretion and time and stuff, so, which I think is good.
Well, that's, that's good.
So, that's that. Okay, moving on. Highway. I have the report that we got from Highway. So, Highway, I'll just a few updates from Harold, roadside mower worked out well, except we didn't use it all the hours on it, but ran it every day. We have done a lot of grading in the past few weeks, so we are getting caught up on some of that. We are doing a riverbank stabilization sta...
Stabilization.
Stabilization project on Powerhouse Row. I will get pricing for culverts for the next meeting, so I can get in, I can order some. That's what I have.
What's the name of the road?
Powerhouse Road.
All right.
Yes, it's my road.
Just so happy with the way the road's done.
I knew everybody was saying that.
It's a town road.
Well, it's a town road.
It's from the flood, we ate the bank out, knocked a tree over.
Don't forget, we can still find stuff on, during the flood.
Which, I don't know what, I don't know what we got.
I shall talk about it.
Talked about that with Harold. We should do that for practice. Okay. Treasurer.
Okay, so, tax bills were mailed out, we've already received $50,000 this week.
Jesus.
So it's pretty good. Budgets are handed out, they're 66, we're at 66%.
See that?
So review, and then ask questions, do now in the next meeting. I also wanted to state, it always is a big discussion every meeting from...
I also wanted to state, it always is a big discussion every meeting from, um, town meeting until whenever it gets done. That that state of Vermont closeout agreement was completed in August. And I never updated the rest of the board that it was done, Zach got it done.
Okay, good.
I just meant to say at last meeting.
Took me to wait, he wants to. I guess you got a big job.
Got awesome, right? Got done, I'm impressed.
And there's a contract here that you need to sign for the chemical spray of knotweed. That's happening down by, across the river there, Clark's Landing, so you need to sign that. Um, that's all I have for treasure, I have other things, but that's.
Okay, town clerk.
Uh, the FEMA that we were just talking about, I had one Zoom meeting with them to go over the damage. And then we had an in-person meeting in the office, four people from FEMA came, talked all about the damage and I had. Pictures, uh, Harold's given me and had all stuff printed out for them and they say we have sixty days to add anything else to it.
So really, that should be added to it.
Yes.
And take pictures, I don't know why it wouldn't have been anyways, but yes.
So just a thought, I guess, we have to get all the.
Definitely.
Pictures and the pricing for all the.
Yeah.
Giant rock stuff.
Right, definitely.
And we have another meeting on the eighteenth. To go over whatever else they need uploaded, probably fifteen or sixteen things to the grant portal. You know, then they do different updates from these meetings, so it's going pretty smooth.
Okay.
The BCA's meeting, talked about next Wednesday at seven o'clock, there's one property being grieved, so it should be pretty quick.
Right, okay, good.
Fall foliage parade permit has been approved, what's that date, thirteen?
No, no.
Oh, no. This is the seven.
The BCA's.
Thirteen for the BCA.
So that came through, everything's fine, uh, I'll have it there for yous to look at. The parade permit for fall parade.
Okay.
And we all got the email or I forwarded to you guys, the culvert replacement on Little Italy. And under the Cross Vermont Trail, it's replacing, it's the plans for replacing the two undersized culverts to improve. This fish passage and stream stability along Keening Brook. So Harold is the point of contact, um, he's talked with her. He's talked with her, uh, last week, I think.
Yeah, and I was wanting to be in on that too, but I haven't heard.
I haven't heard anything since then, so she sent the, um, I'll leave it in your thing. Just the same with the, we got the pictures of the culverts and.
Okay.
The final design, remember this is all the design, not.
The actual project, yeah, right.
So, which wasn't gonna cost the town anything for the design. I did apply for the municipal energy resilience program that we talked about with Mike Geis a couple meetings ago. I just did level one, level two required schematics of every building and electrical and architectural, everything, but.
Okay, okay.
So that all got, um, sent in and I've received an email back, so we just gotta wait, whatever else they need, we'll get to them. Oh, the electricity and the fuel oil for the buildings for the past three years.
Oh, right, okay.
That's easy enough.
Yep.
Mill Street, the new attorney reached out, needed a few more deeds, I got those to her, Dorothy helped with that too. And she has the new easement ready, she sent it to us and to Nate. Nate has looked at it, said it looked good to him and I asked in the email for an update. He thought the update would be that it's progressing and they're still waiting on the UVM. UVM to provide the results of the phase one archaeological investigation. And he still thinks it's on track, forbids to go out this winter for spring construction.
Good, excellent, yeah, that's good.
And the, so the, um, everything was sent for the easement to.
Well, that's what I gotta reach out, see what the next step, no. She didn't specifically say that, she sent us a copy and Nate a copy. I mean, I read it, it sounds fine for what I know, and Nate responded that it all looked good to him. So I'm assuming then she sends it to.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
But I'll double check.
Good.
And that's all I have.
Okay, do you think it carried?
You're welcome.
Assistant, assessment.
Um, so John Rustinghouse, our assessor for Harrison Health Issue.
Okay.
Um, he's doing okay, a little bit better at the moment, um, and we're both signed up, have done our paperwork to be. The ones to do our reappraisal, so I'm, I'm in as a trainee and he's done, he's gonna be in as a. Assessor or whatever, the, the top level that is, so. At this point, we're looking forward on that and we'll be getting our plan together.
Okay.
In the next couple of months. Um, I had a, did a webinar on, a three hour webinar, reappraisal, which was good. It had, it kinda was a general information, but there was a lot of stuff in there that I got out of, so. That was, um, our property evaluation or review. So, um, I get a lot of questions about the photos that are online with the properties. So part of the prob, part of the issue is leftover from the reappraisal. When they got done doing reappraisal, they gave me two boxes of photos. So these are the ones that I haven't got done yet. So instead of them labeling the, labeling the, the property.
With the photo.
On this photo and then putting it on the property card, they took photos. That was all just things that the contract said was that they would take photos and then they gave us boxes of photos. So.
Because they don't know which photos go with which properties.
Right, and like on Groton Pond. Um, Janet Puffer, I think, took them in a boat one day, in her boat, and went around the lake. And got beautiful pictures from the lake and Lisa and her mom went and labeled, labeled those all for me. But then the assessor also took a picture of the house from the land. But we've never, he didn't match them up or label them, so. I know there's an issue with the pro, the photos online, I haven't even worked on them in the last year because. I've just been busy with everything else, but my hope is to get back to them and get more of these online, but. Yes, there are issues, but it's leftover from the reappraisal.
Okay.
Um, and Phil and, Philip and Harold went through and labeled a lot, um. So I've done, I've done a lot, but.
We've got more to do.
This is the unidentified.
Okay.
Um. And so I gave you, uh, a, a copy, a new copy. I talked with Gary, um, he's got reappraisal coming up and he, um, is recommending a new. Copier for, um, the assessor's office. He, he's not sure, but he knows that that, the one I got, the big one, is more than twenty years old.
Okay.
Um, and that, the new one that's there would do, um, will, has more bells and whistles, so like it'll scan. Um, it'll scan and it'll do other things that the current one doesn't do. Um, so the money, I talked to the state and I asked about. If this, if a print, if a printer could come out of our reappraisal fund, that we have the money, and they said yes.
Okay.
It's a, it goes, so it could come out of reappraisal money, it could come out of. It could just be put in the budget for next year or we could just, you know, do something with this year, so. I just wanted to present that.
Okay.
For whatever, um, and so the price, the price is the thirty-nine, sixty-eight. The sixty-month thing over here is if we pay for it for five years. So the total purchase price would be the thirty-nine, sixty-eight.
Okay. Can we pay for it for five years and still pay thirty-nine, sixty-eight?
I don't know, you can do the math. Gary just felt that we'd wanna pay for it in one.
Well, I was just saying, if we can afford it in five years and it still only costs us the same amount.
So, um, yeah.
It's like zero percentage.
It can come out of the reappraisal.
So what makes the most sense that we would take it out of? Would we, the best thing to take it out of the reappraisal money or do we just take it out of our fund, our, our?
I mean, it's sixty. I can't answer that.
I don't know, there's sixty-three thousand now in the reappraisal.
What, what do we anticipate the cost of reappraisal to be, or what are we planning on putting in that fund in the future?
Um.
Well, and the copier thing is, is more for everything to do with.
The whole office.
The whole office, so would we really, it's not just for appraisal.
I would just give it somewhere that we had money.
Okay. What other money do we have that it would come out for, like equipment, office?
Well, we have a reserve, yeah, we set, set up our new reserve, remember at town meeting?
Right.
It doesn't have much in there now, but.
And some box computers this year, so.
I know, but if we can go on the schedule for next year, if we can get by till the next year, then we'll put it in as it needs to be replaced.
So my next question is if we do, if we put it in the budget, because we do on budget day.
Yeah.
We vote on it at town meeting, so when am I gonna see it?
Do we really need to vote on it?
Well, we, we.
We vote on it as far as the town budget.
Now, yeah, did it?
We can get it set.
So would, I would see it till like a year from now when we start getting tax money again?
No.
No, once it's put, well, we totally. It's, it's good, yeah. It's a, it's a.
Four thousand.
Yeah, and it's a thing that, it's an office that's have.
Well, remember, we created the.
Yeah, I know, so I'm just wondering, should it?
I think it's a budget day, just review tomorrow, so.
Okay, so we'll figure it out.
Okay, I'm just, I would just throw it out there.
But you need it sooner than later, you're not, it's a way, another way in a year ahead.
What, when is, when are we starting the appraisal process?
Well, we gotta have, we've gotta have our plan in by December twentieth. So between now and December, we're gonna be doing a study, and I can't tell you the name of that study. We're gonna be studying like, um, forty or fifty properties. And then presenting that to the state with our plan, the plan is like eight or ten pages long. And then they'll approve it and then like next year, like after the first of the year or spring, we'll be doing the reappraisal.
Okay.
Which will be another like fifty properties, it'll be like, uh, it's gonna be like two percent or five percent or something. And then we'll actually do visits and do those, do like a real reappraisal on those properties. But then when we get all done, all of the properties will be updated with new, have a new land schedule and a new. Um, everything will be updated, but we will only have put, seeing like forty or fifty properties.
Right.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, a reappraisal, I can't say that.
So I mean, I, I just also says, I, I wanna try to understand what the priority of the need is. Is it something that we need to figure out before the end of this year or is it something that can wait until the budget's approved? Um, I mean, that's kind of my question.
I think it'll, it'll last, but you know.
Well, so if it doesn't last, it's a simple one, I feel like, to then we, if we need to go buy one, then we buy it out of the reappraisal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fund, but if it can last, then we'll figure it into the budget.
Okay.
How's that?
And so we started, Gary and I started talking about it, cause Harold was looking for a printer. And so when Harold was looking for a printer, I said, you know, what's, is he looking for my big one or my little one? Cause they were talking about, and he said the big one, and then I said, oh, well, how old is that big one? And it didn't meet the highway department's needs, but then Gary and I went back and forth on it and he said, you know, this. What you've got is more than twenty years old, so.
Okay.
And the fact that this one, this new one could scan and stuff is, is huge, cause I do a lot of scanning.
Okay, good.
So, thank you, I just wanted to present that.
No problem.
Okay, that's it, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, constable, have we heard anything?
Yeah, that day is, uh, Clark's Landing will be going in tomorrow.
Okay.
They have to be checked every twenty-four hours, just like a regular track.
Okay.
And that's for the Pharaoh cats.
Okay, and you're putting in, you'll put time in for, for that stuff, right?
I'll, I'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Anything else under constable?
No, we need to reach out to him about fall foliage day.
Okay.
The roads, we gotta get the signs up.
We need touch base with them too, yeah, we need, um, we need to talk with Harold and, and Philip, uh, the signs. I get, I think they're at the garage, the ones for either on the down.
No, they're here.
Oh, they're, oh, they're here, okay, yeah, we just need to put them out, put them out.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I can text them.
So that, yeah, we should jump on that.
I think we need to get them out, like now.
Yeah, earlys. Yeah, so they would, tomorrow would be thirty days prior to. That's. Hour, yeah, one, one hour.
I mean, I would just get it done in a minute.
Yeah, yeah, okay, we'll get that, we'll make that happen.
Be safest.
Okay, anything on library, do we know, are we, anything on library?
Just doing a program on the sixteenth, uh, with the community garden, just something about, uh, petri bowls and. I don't know, she's constantly doing nice programs, so that's good.
Okay, good. Zoning, Dan.
Uh, a couple things, um, we're up to seventeen permits now, so we're still lagging behind by quite a bit. Um, you're gonna be getting some information from Lee Shelberg and Terry Dana's sister. Those two pieces of land that there's no deed to.
Okay.
Um, I put in quite a bit of personal time on it, trying to find the deeds, went back to eighteen sixteen. And I, I can't find it, I don't know where they are.
Okay.
Um, I met with Rural Edge on the housing, on the roofs, and I met with the person, commercial. Capital needs assessment, they're gonna be taking, uh, being the ones, there's no fixed or they're gonna replace them, all three of them. Luzon House.
Roofs, is that what you're saying?
The Groton General Store.
Meaning it, it needs new shoes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
They need it on looks like a lot.
They're falling off.
Yeah.
Cause that. What else do I get here? Oh, we had another septic issue when I got back. Um, the new estimate now is sixteen thousand dollars to bring it up to code.
Okay.
So, and they're working with that with the guy from Joe's Brook.
Okay, good.
When he can work it in, that's all I got for that.
Okay, how about health officers, Sean?
Uh, I had a dog bite, transport, um, I had a complaint, I had to go do at Rural Edge. Um, the library apartment, it's got black mold on the ceiling in the bathroom. And there's three or four different issues with it, I spoke with Teresa today, a meeting with Mike in the next day or so on that. The fix is to put a larger exhaust fan in and actually vent it outside and not into the attic where it's creating the black mold on the ceiling. So that's a fix there and I'm gonna have to replace all of the, uh, all of the, the sideboards in the bathroom. The, uh, plaster and stuff, so I'm on top of that, that's it.
Too busy with that.
Yeah, that's it.
Did you deal with the dog, the, the Great Dane thing that was in?
Yes, I did.
I saw the dog, it was sat tied out back of the building.
Problem is that section eight housing in that particular apartment and they, they have named that as a service dog. I, as a service dog, you can't, you can't do anything though, it's a service dog, that's what they're.
They keep their service dog tied up down back of the.
With a saddle on it, yeah, it, it's. Yep.
Oh, okay, all right.
Until it bites somebody, then it'll be on the mark for you.
Okay, well, thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Uh, Dorothy?
So, Dan, where's the property with no deed?
Uh, what road is that on, Gary?
It's that little sliver of, I believe of Terry Dana's that, uh.
There's two slivers.
Yeah.
Two, two small pieces I wanted to add.
Right, can you guys get together and work on that or whatever?
I, I have a perfect day to go into that.
Okay, cool, all right, thanks.
Well, I, I know that Lee Shelberg sent a letter to John Rustinghouse about it. And I know I spoke with you a long time ago about it, after I'd spoken to the sister.
Yeah.
But I hadn't heard anything quite a while, I didn't know what they were up to.
Okay.
And then just, I got an email yesterday.
Okay, all right, well, another thing to work on, maintenance?
Um, I reached out to Green Mountain Power about the flickering light, um, that's up two poles. Again, I've called them three times and she finally called me back and said that they have an order out and that will be done. Fixed soon, cause I did see it flickering just the other day.
Okay.
And I also reminded her about the pole that's right by my car that had been replaced a few years ago, which is sitting there. And it needed to be done before our spring project and she said she didn't know when, but she has it on the dock.
Okay, good.
You know, at least those things are there. Um, and the, in the years past, we've had, um, Ben Gandon, he kind of watched. The outside parts of the building that he could reach for fall foliage day. So, um, I didn't know if he wanted Steve to do some of that, that he could reach, you know, just. It would be by the entrance of the gym and like entranceway of the offices, by my windows, you know, all that.
Pressure washer or just?
Yeah, no, I think you rent, rent a pressure washer and do these small sections.
That'd be good, yeah.
At the height of standing on the ground.
Yeah.
You know? And didn't know if that was something you wanted done. Like I said, Ben did it, and I think Mark Shelberg might have helped him before that. Just, you know, it needs to get done.
Yeah, yeah. That sounds good. That'd be great. Is that it for maintenance?
Um, yes.
IT?
I... I know that the computers are here. I don't... I think Gary might have, um, sent an email to y'all. No, he didn't.
Right.
A while back. He... It's on...
It's been five weeks, so she said it four and a half weeks ago.
He might have, but...
Yeah, maybe, I don't remember.
I don't really have...
I think it's... He knows he's got to do the computer, so...
Yeah, the monitors just came.
Oh, they did? Oh, okay, I did know that. Um, so he is... You know, he knows.
Okay, good. No problem. Planning Commission, do we have anything for plant... Planting?
Still working on it, I guess.
Okay, good. NEK, CUD, for work, updates, anything on Community Center grant, NEK updates?
No, but we should get one from that CUD one, 'cause I think, Dan, you and I were talking about nothing that's happened. They were such a big hurry to get that cabinet... Yeah, the cabinet. Now, we haven't heard a word after the... You said the SLAB is there?
The SLAB is in. I'm gonna be calling it tomorrow.
So, it's just supply chain issues?
Good.
Getting the stuff here?
Well, there's a big push on it. The spring, you know, they said, get it in. Because they wanted to get it in before May.
Right.
So, they got all the stuff around, and now they've done nothing.
Yeah. Well, they've also... They've run into a lot of issues with... With accessing power poles and then accessing poles. With the CUD, that's been one of the biggest setbacks that they've been dealing with. I don't know if that has anything to do with it, but I know that uh, they've been having to go back and forth with Washington Electric and... And Green Mountain Power and, you know, trying to get access to... To attach the poles.
Right, if that's got nothing to do with setting cabinets or setting the equipment there. So, I don't know. I better call them tomorrow.
We paid them, right? Yeah, okay. Yeah, that would be good. Dan, that'd be great, if we could check in.
Yeah, check with Mike guys too, or... Or call?
I might as well see them or...
They call them directly, then you...
I know, we're in a big hurry to get all this going and get things happening.
And get the money.
Yeah, yeah, get the money, and then now it's like, okay, what's happening? Okay, good.
And I can't remember when we were supposed to hear about the Community Center grant, wasn't that?
I thought it was August, but...
August twentieth or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that might be a Mike guy's question, so that should be... I should hear about that stuff.
I need to check in on that stuff, I guess. Okay, good. Town policy, um, that we've been working on for the personnel policy for the town, um, which we've been over in great detail. It seemed like. And so on and so forth. Uh, we've reviewed it with Philip, I believe, that all three of us have met with Philip individually and talked about parts of the policy and the updates on it. Changes according to get it to standards and so on and so forth. I guess...
The whole harmless is added, um, Zach, that you wanted for the snowplow.
Right. So... I think we're at the point where we're approving, ready to approve the... The town policy.
I have issues with certain things that are removed out of the policy and that I discussed with, like... So, at this point, really, without, um... Without the input that I have, I don't... I just wanna inform the board of things that... That should be possibly put in there that was taken out.
But, so Philip, we have gone over this policy individually with you, and we've discussed it and whatever. This is the town policy that the board is approving, and that's what we've come up to, come up with. I thought that we had come to agreements and discussions and so on this town policy.
There really hasn't. There wasn't... The... The improvement is that there's no say from real estate. No say from... From me. I... I was gonna say from anybody else. I don't know what anybody else has been given to look at or anything, so...
Everybody...
I must have input into it, to the board.
But you have had input to us individually. You've talked with us all about this policy. We're not gonna go over the whole entire policy tonight.
No, we don't have those certain... Certain things that I have are not... That have... They don't have to... I mean, you could sit down if you wanted to.
But I spent quite a bit of time reviewing this with you. And Zach has reviewed it with you, and...
And there's things that... That I told him in, uh, I don't know whether he cares, whether Aaron knows. But... I explained to Zach some things in there that really shouldn't... That should be put in there to protect the town.
But that's how we came up with the policy to protect the town from VLCT.
VLCT.
So, VLCT, that's the guidelines that they go... It's like NFPA standards for fire department. Everybody thinks that's the law, they're not the law, they're guidelines. That's what... That's what the leagues, the cities and towns is given.
But that's the only guidelines that we have as a board to follow and take suggestions of to come up with to protect our town. So, that's why they're...
I spent a tremendous amount of time going over policies.
And I understand that, Philip, but this isn't... We're not here to have this big discussion. We have done this individually and met with you and gone over this and talked about this in great detail, so...
So, but nothing... But so... So, this board now needs to say that there's nothing in there that I can say for this board to put in these policies to protect an employee in this town or the town itself.
We have reviewed it in great detail, um...
So, so if I... If I cite specific things, you can... You can say we...
So, we're gonna sit here tonight again and go over this with you on...
It can be that. It can be simple.
I'm... I'm not willing to do that tonight.
You're not going to do that?
We have done that individual. I don't know, Zach, Aaron, how you... Where do you... Where do you stand on this and how you feel about it?
I agree, I think we've gone through this a lot. That being said, I mean, I'm talking with Phillip. I mean, I can understand some of his concerns. I mean, there's... There's... We've removed the disciplinary action processes from the policies altogether. So, I can understand as an employee where he can be concerned, especially that, you know, now, you know, there's one statement at the beginning that says that we have the discretion to terminate an employee for any reason.
Or no reason?
Or no reason at all. Which I... Again, my personal opinion is, is that's kinda concerning.
Except that we have guidelines to follow through the stated...
That was written by VLCT attorneys.
No, and I understand that, I understand that, but there's no disciplinary action process now. So, we've completely removed that from the policy, so if, you know, Philip or any employee violates any of these policies, what's... What is our... What is our... Then what is our policy for handling that violation? Is it just that the SLAB then terminates that employee? Or is it a progress... Should we be following a progressary? Progressive disciplinary thing? I mean, that's a... That is a concern, huh?
It would have to depend on the severity of the infraction.
Well, absolutely, but then we have nothing in here now that lays that out at all.
Well, not that individual.
Do you understand what I'm saying? Like Wayne, like the whole thing.
What I would say, though, is that... And I don't wanna create an argument over it, but what I would say is, is without a progressary, progress... And I run into this in the private sector. You don't have a progressive disciplinary, uh, policy. If we were to terminate an employee and that employee were to go to the Board of Labor, the Board of Labor would kick that back and we would... We would be in violation of Department of Labor standards. Because we... We... There is no policy, you know what I mean? That's... That's a concern. I can... I can understand that being a concern from an employee's perspective. Because if we pass this and next week we decide to terminate an employee for no cause, we could do it.
You can't terminate an employee without policy.
There's state guidelines.
Well, but that...
But we don't have to put it in a policy, because there's state guidelines.
Well, but no, what this says is, we can terminate an employee for no reason.
State law that rules town when it comes to the labor situation. You cannot terminate an employee without a policy.
Which I absolutely agree with, but we can't have a policy to contradict state policy.
This gives the guy... This gives some teeth.
That's why I'm...
That we don't have, you know, a lot of things we do. We don't have teeth in our policies. This, to take out... There's three... Three things that were taken out. Those are the teeth in this policy that you have to terminate an employee. They were taken out. And I... And in my opinion, and I'm an employee, and you have to look at further down, it's beyond me. It's not just, it's me, because these really... These really don't apply. You gotta...
No, we have one concern, Andy, that we have three employees in this town.
And this doesn't apply.
Each person has had questions and concerns and reviewed it and so on and so forth.
But there's a... There's a board memo that... That really has a... Is... There's some sections in here. Even... Even taking out the probationary period for an employee, that's gone.
So, you're coming here not with one... One issue with the thing. You're coming here with multiple...
My... My... Not...
Multiple things.
Not like I had this four thousand things, I don't have that because it don't pay. I got... There's... There's simple things that can be... They are... However they were taken out, they can be put back in.
There's not things that are necessarily taken out of the policy. They've been rewritten in the correct, um, thing to cover the town, there's...
The probation doesn't apply to some elected or...
Right, probation, I agree too, I mean, that's... That's not necessarily a follow-up practice. I mean, from a probationary standpoint, I mean, if you're violating policy, whether you're on probation or not, you know, you would fall within disciplinary action.
And she has two model policies. Model one for small towns, which is what we follow.
Yeah, okay.
And then model two for large towns, which I didn't even look at. Because we don't follow...
I don't follow the...
Right, right, I... I understand that.
I could, if I applied for another job, I could possibly follow it, but I... You understand that, if you understand uh, some of the policies, that's fine. The... There is... There is, um... It won't take long. It won't rain at all.
I'm not...
You know, I'm not...
We're not sitting here in a board meeting to review and discuss this policy that we've all individually been over and sat with you for a great deal of time, Philip. So, now you wanna come into the meeting and you want to hash over this whole thing with us again? No! That's not how this is gonna work. Like, we have taken time individually to do this, to get this to this point, Philip. Is where we're at.
I... I... I agree, we've done a lot of work on this, but I will say, like, stuff that's written here, I mean, a disciplined or terminated employee will have no right to appeal such...
Okay, fine, then we're not...
We all have our...
I'm gonna have to go over it, but you can remake a civil action against the board.
Well, again, that's... I mean, I... I can understand Philip's concern.
Okay, then it can't get approved tonight, and it'll have to go back and get reviewed more and discussed more.
I mean, I don't even know how to write that first page. I mean, that is what the VLCT attorney recommended.
It's very... You know, that's...
I've been going back and forth with her.
No, I get it. It's just, it's... It's kinda perplexing to me, 'cause...
I know, but we're following, you know, we're just following the guidelines, you know, and...
Well, I'm just trying to think of...
Okay.
I'm also trying to think of, you know, based off of my knowledge and experience of where we could create an issue for the town too.
I mean, if it goes to the state level, like Dan is saying, then this doesn't even...
As a company, when I fire or hire or do whatever, discipline and to any employee, if an employee goes to the state and says, "I was falsely terminated from my job," then the state does a review and they're like, "Yeah, you... You can't..." They couldn't have fired you for what you did. "Did you do this? Did you do that? Did you whatever?" And it's like, "No, I didn't do all that stuff." So, then they're like, "Okay, well, then you're at fault," and so on and so forth. So... But I don't have a policy, you know, I don't have policies that spell out everything. I just try to...
I mean, I could...
You know, somebody gets screen warnings, somebody, whenever, and you check into that, if there is a problem, acquiring...
I just know that the previous policy had a progressive disciplinary process on it.
I mean, if you want me to put the first call, first page of the old policy in place of this, we can do that, it's just not one VLCT has recommended.
So, and Philip's saying it's not one thing, this isn't, that isn't the problem with the policy, he's saying there's multiple things.
There's two, there's two things that has to do with termination, two full sections, plus, you know, the, the, the probation was a real small policy, real small section, that moved in, stuff out, that's, I just felt, man, that's one way.
That's fine, so then, so I don't, I'm not, well, I'm staying out of this, I've spent mine with this and I'm, so Zach or Aaron, if you want to get involved and work with Philip on this, then that's up to you.
It can be too, you know, it's not, it's, there's not a lot of time that has to be spent, it's just as simple as how it was taken out, it can be put back in and it's, it's covering the town, we can come up with something.
I don't know, I mean, I, again, I mean, I, I think, to Lisa's point, we've run this through VLCT, it's, it's just, it's odd to me.
We're not policy writers, so we need guidance, and that's where I've been getting at.
Right, which is, which, I mean, they have model, model policies and guidelines, for sure.
And they always err on the side of caution.
And I went back to her specifically when, after I talked to Philip twice about it, and she said the town attorneys, I mean, the VLCT attorneys wrote that up and that was the end of the conversation.
So, I mean, what it comes down to is that if, it's, the way it's written, the way it's written in this, in this policy, this unapproved policy at this point, is that the select board has sole discretion for disciplinary action for any town employee. And, and the, the ability to discipline or terminate that employee. But what's, again, what's odd to me is that there's this, I don't know. The town or the employee may terminate employment at any time for any reason or no reason at all, with or without notice.
Meaning, so if, if an employee was stealing money from the town, if an employee was doing something, it gives the, the town, it has a thing saying that we can terminate you.
Right.
For, for that, for anything.
Violating the policy, great.
Which is to protect the town.
Well, but, I mean, this also says that the town can, we can have a select board meeting and pull in a town employee and say, and vote to terminate that employee for no reason.
Well, if you needed a ref, you would need that clause in there.
If you had a major.
Right.
So that clause is important to stay the way it is.
Okay.
Okay, the other thing is, as he said, it depends on the heinousness of the infraction. If it's something terrible, you do not want to go through a progressive thing that allows that person to continue the bad action. You need to take care of it right then.
Without a doubt, I, I understand that.
Because what, that's what it is, is protecting the town.
I, I absolutely agree, but I'm also.
But you also have a board to protect the town too, so the board discusses it, meets, talks about it, makes a decision, blah, blah, blah. Then you have the state that will review that, if an employee also has a concern with that, and come back to the board and say, hey, listen, there's a problem here, blah, 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 per se.
You are?
My name's Dennis Casey, hello, I'm V-line driver.
Right.
Okay, I'm not an attorney, but I've done a lot of employment, HR stuff for a number of years. It sounds like it's written as a Vermont is an employment at will state.
Right.
And the way it's written is basically the employee can leave at any time, as well as the employer can let a person go at any time. That's, that's the way it sounds like it's written there, and Vermont has been an employment at will state for a long time.
For many, many years.
True, right.
Okay, so that answers it.
So it's, we're talking both sides, it's really, you can't, I can quit tomorrow, you still owe me my, my storage.
You can't say we, we don't get this, and you can't do that, and you can't leave because of whatever you're saying, you can walk away.
There is no employment contract.
Right.
Correct, correct. So I mean.
So we beat that, can I have a bullet point that I, that's taken out? It's in, it's in one of the sections, those, those, those two other parts are those sections, section 34 and 33, had to do with termination, and I have another one that's, that affects me. And if we approve the policy, then I'm not sure how it goes, I'm not sure how I can use my comp time as I've been using it.
But we went over all that.
Yeah, so, but we didn't, but when we went over it, Kristen, it was no change, it means I can't, like, you know.
We explained to you how it was, you were taking it, so it's written one way, but you, but you.
We said.
Our misunderstanding.
It's got to do with it.
If it's.
Now, there's no change in.
If it's written, it is a change because it's written change. If it's written in there, it could leave what's in there, but if it's written, how do I actually take this money? That it's just a line added in there.
We added it. I don't get what you're saying.
You changed some of the words, we took out buy down.
Took out the one you didn't want, the day you were in here talking.
So you gotta understand that I haven't got a copy of the new policies, that's, if that's been in there. So has it, did you take out that?
I gave you a copy of that, that day, last time you came. We took the buy down out. Took the town, so the pressure for the buy down.
So is it, is it, is it, does it say like it did before in lieu of comp time?
Definitely got the same thing out where you're like.
Yeah, which, which, well, I mean, it's definitely, I mean, Philip, Philip, the one that you, that we looked at is.
So, so the last copy, I guess, August.
Okay.
What day do you want?
And we're in September, so assuming it's.
I changed it to September for the meeting.
Right. So that's the one we're going off of, is the August edition.
I mean, I changed the date on the bottom.
Right.
And I fixed the word that he didn't like for buy down for the comp.
So.
Right, so what, I mean, I guess, looking at this, I'm, I'm not sure what your question is, Philip.
My, my question is, is it, it was put in, or it was taken out of the original ones that said. No, I can't find that.
And just to be clear, that, you know, this is the select board in the town policy, and usually it's, if we had a complaint, which I had talked to Philip about, like, everybody came in and said, hey, we really, we don't like how this is, but you're the only complaint, Philip, on any of this.
You know why? You know why? Because the only one who uses that, that way.
So nobody else in, that works here at the town uses?
They can.
So, I remember, but Lisa, she answered questions and told me pretty much that it was too far when Vermont leads the cities and towns to go further. So I, I have questions, I have this many questions, any of them, any of the two of them, sorry.
The, the similar unaccederated at this point to the comp time, which is the old policy is, it read.
So, the other comment that I'd like to make is that when it was given to me on August 24th, the note said that the select board will adopt this at the September 6th meeting. I had never seen it, even though I'd asked about it a couple times, I hadn't seen it. But then the day I get it, it says that you will be, you will adopt it on September 6th with no input from me.
We've been reviewing this for a few months now, actually.
And I asked and I was never, never given a copy of it.
Okay, but that's, of course, I've heard of this, so I don't, I don't know, everybody has the opportunity to review it at any time.
Employee policies aren't usually reviewed by everybody, except the select board, just like health insurance.
And then if you don't like policies, go somewhere else and find another job.
So.
So this, so, so what was put in and what was taken out, it was a simple line, bullet line, it was taken out, an employee may, at the town's discretion, be paid cash in lieu of comp time. That was a simple one-liner, boom, 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 and Lisa and Carrie know how to deal with that and, and.
And that same day, Philip, we went over it and we told you that we would put it back to that way to make you happy, where the select board couldn't decide, but you could decide how to use your comp time.
That's wrong.
So.
So it went right back to the way he wanted it?
So, but it's not in, so the policy I have doesn't need to have, I'm sorry, that's just my, from, from the August one, I don't have that.
Okay.
So that's.
And let's see, I mean, is that the?
I'd have to look. Did you look at it? I didn't bring the document.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's.
Second's very true with the.
Modern ball of error.
If they did, there's some. And way it was put back in this, it, it does give the town teeth, the way that it says, the town may at its sole discretion at any time pay the employee for time and work in lieu of providing a comp time. That tells me, Philip, you're not going to get the comp time now, we're going to tell you, you're going to have to take a comp time, oh, it's simple.
No, that's the.
But that's, that's a section.
And, and I, that's not in that copy.
So, so then.
So, and just for the record that we talked about and we negotiated on this policy, that VLCT has recommended that we not allow employees to drive, uh, file their driveway. They're deadly against it because it's an open risk for the town. But we, the board, decided to overlook that and say, we're gonna allow that in negotiation, that you allow some of these things that maybe you are 100% didn't like the wording of how it was worded. So when you say that we don't follow, we don't have to follow, you know, word for word, and we're not following word for word, we actually are allowing that, when they highly recommend us not to allow that. So I feel like we had some negotiation on this whole policy, and that's what we were willing to do. But you're not willing to negotiate, you're willing to tell us that, I want this, I don't agree, I don't like this, I'm not dealing with this, this is not right.
We'll just deal with it, but you know why?
So that.
Line put back here.
So that, the employee may, the employee can choose to have a good comp time paid up. That's at any point in the town year, I mean, that's.
Exactly what you did.
Yeah, that's.
That's exactly what I do, you know, and Dan doesn't understand it, but that's fine because he doesn't have to understand it. He wants to, I can explain how it goes.
So it's been changed to the way he wants it. So that is exactly, exactly how you use it, how you use it.
How, but it wasn't.
And it's taken out that the town can force you to get paid for your time.
That's in there?
Well, you can choose.
Yes, but, I mean, I, I understand that they, there are reasons why if, if, if an employee is gonna do something stupid with their time, the town needs to have the, the teeth to say, I don't think so.
Well, I mean, I think.
That's, that's, that is, what's in there, that ought to be in there.
I mean, I, I think, you know, you know, Philip, what, what you showed me and we talked about is not what's there.
Because we talked to him, we each took the sentence out.
And what's, what's there, you know, again, I mean, I, I don't, I, I'll disagree with you on that, but I don't think the town, I mean, I think, I think the town needs to have the ability at our discretion to be able to pay out what needs to be paid out, especially if, you know, you're terminated or whatever, or, you know, end of the year, those type of things. But if you choose to use your comp time and you use it in an otherwise way, we are, we're not in a position to tell you, that's not, you shouldn't, you can't do that, Philip, because it's unwise, right? That, that, we can't be responsible for your, for, for your ability to be responsible, you know what I mean? Does that make sense?
So that, that, so that, that word that, that was in there at the end, took that out of it, but the other stuff that was, where I really, when I said to them, I really had hiccup.
It looks, it looks like that's been changed.
But rereading that, I'm going, that's a protection on the town's part, so it, you know, if I just start, really, really just, and not come into work, just using comp time for, for no reason.
Well, but I mean, it does, well, but it, it does say in there, you have to have it approved by your supervisor, and, and, and it has to be, you know, that has to be done, and, and, you know, if, you know, if you want to appeal to the, to the select board, or if the select board wants to overrule your supervisor, it's in there.
Yep, that's, that's, that's the teeth in there, that.
But, but, you know, that, that's in there, if, you know, then, so I think we're good.
So I'm, I'm done on this discussion and so on and so forth, I make a motion that we approve the town policy as written.
Oh, I'll, I'll second that.
And we've had discussion on it, all in favor?
I'd say aye.
Aye. So.
Dorothy and Philip, policies are reviewed every year. Policies are reviewed every year, traditionally it happens around April. So if you got a laundry list of concerns between now and then.
Excellent, how about from this point on, we can write this, because you can add these policies anytime, you know, if you want to, like, draw something up, or how do you think I would put it in? You can review that, say yes or no, that'd be cool. I think that when we go over these policies, may every year we do them, we haven't done it since 2022, but it should have been done, and we just know that. We all maybe ought to be more involved in, and maybe some of the stuff wouldn't be blown out of proportion way I did this.
And I would say, you know, and I, I don't know that it's.
Well, we have more than, just to worry about, there's, there's many policies in this town, and we're trying to run a town, and we show on it.
And so, what I would say is, is, you know, I think, you know, you have the ability, as does, not just as an employee, but as a resident of the town. If you've got a concern about a policy or ordinance, you know, you can give it to the select board in writing, or bring it to the select board's attention, and we can review it, and, you know, I think that, that goes for anything. But when it comes down to this, you know, we can, again, I think, and, you know, thank you to Lisa for doing a lot of hard work on these policies, because she's put in a lot of hard work, a lot of communication with VLCT, and, you know, running, running this round and round. And, you know, and Tristan too, and me, and, you know, you're talking with everybody, and, you know, Carrie being part of that conversation too. We've done a lot to try to get the policies and keep them up to date and, and make sure that we're staying relevant, and, you know, I think we're doing a job of that, we just, again, it comes down to, if you see an issue, bring it to somebody's attention, and we shouldn't wait till we review the policies every, every year or two years to say, yeah, this is not legal, I have a question about it.
Okay, open to public, other business, so, I forget your.
Dennis, Dennis Casey.
Okay, Dennis Casey.
I was wondering if the town has had any discussion or any interest in an electric vehicle charging station? You have, no?
I have not had any discussion.
There is a program, a state program, and we have a grant application process to install public chargers.
And you're right to grant?
Um, I'd be happy to be involved in it.
Yeah, so, let me, let me get back on to.
So, first of all, I do it for a couple of reasons, one is, so our closest charging here would be Peachum, there's a charging station at the library, or in Bradford, that's probably the, or the two closest to us here. There's really nothing along the trail to court, okay, so part of this thinking initially is, if you've got people coming this way, and there's apps on people's phones now where charging stations are available, okay, having so, a public convenience, so people have a reason to actually stop. Maybe, maybe they've got bikes on their car, and they might get on the bike trail and take off, and they can charge here in town. It gives them a reason to come in. Secondly, as electric vehicles become more prominent, we're gonna have town residents who won't have charging at home, either because they rent and there is no, no charging capacity available at the home, or as we found out, you need to have a transformer upgraded before you can even have a charging station put in. So down the road, there'll be, probably be a low, a need for local services to have availability for charging as well. This state grant proposal is projecting to, it's about, I think it's $1.8 million to, they'll pay up to 95% of cost for communities and businesses that are interested in creating the infrastructure to do it. The other thing is, it's a potential revenue stream, you set it up, it's all done by, credit card payment becomes actually a revenue source for the towns or businesses that are setting up charging stations as well, okay? I talked to Green Mountain Power, and they're would actually be willing to have a representative come to a future meeting, and just kind of discuss the nuts and bolts of, you know, what it looks like, what, they have some charging stations called EDGO, that's what's down in Bradford at the grocery store, but they're, they're not doing those anymore, they're kind of, they'll help with the infrastructure, but they're not actually doing the charges anymore, they're letting businesses and communities kind of take that over. So just, just pointing it out there, willing to be a part of it, willing to bring Green Mountain Power to, to a meeting, if that's what you want to do.
Which I'm all for, I have no problem, I think it's a great idea, the problem is putting it all together, either with a planning, like, somebody's gonna piss up.
So, I mean, there's a couple, couple things, I think it's a great idea, I think, I've talked with a number of different residents who've had, who've brought this up as an idea for something that, that we should have here, and especially with our connection with the force and, you know, with, with, you know, with tourism in the state, it makes a lot of sense. You know, the first question is, is, just reading through this, it looks like this is a 100% match, is that what I'm getting? Like, that they're, what the project cost is, it looks like they pay out 25% upfront for installation, but the rest gets paid up, paid after the project's completed?
Yeah.
And then, I mean, the other question is, you know, the, the bigger question really is, what, what, you know, where would we put this? Where would it be located?
Yeah, that's what you got, yeah.
And I think, you know, and then, I guess to go along with that is, is timing, right? So we apply for these, we apply for this grant, we get, if we get approved, you know, when would that project have to be, have to be done by?
Of course, if it wind in with that project right there, and you had a few places to charge a car, and we've already got it all done, and it could be part of it.
Right, that's exactly what.
Somebody has to plan this all, put it together.
But I think, that, they, what I would suggest is, you know, this could be something that we bring to Nate, who's engineering the project for the parking lot, and see, see how it would be properly incorporated into that project. It may be something simple, right, I mean, I'm just thinking, it, it may just be that we need to work, and probably town will need to be involved too, on, you know, what location works on, within kind of the, the project we've got, if we're gonna do it on this bar, on this, on this site. Or is there another site the town, the town owns, it would be.
This would be an easy place.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right in the middle of the street.
Right.
And you also need to figure out how big you want it to be, do you want two stations, do you want four stations, do you want level two, do you want level three? I mean, there's a whole bunch of different, the different stuff that.
Are you simple?
Pretty small, right. Are you small? Well, pretty small, but also kind of planning out for the future, if the money is here now, like having a level three supercharger, which will charge most vehicles in about 45 minutes, for somebody traveling through town, that's very attractive. So, so kind of, but thinking about, okay, how many spots do we want, how many, how big do we want this?
So it's kind of over our head as a board, we would have to have a committee that would.
I would say an informal working group.
Who want to commit?
We don't want to go down the committee road, we can help it.
I'm just saying, like, Mike and Mike work on things and whatever.
Have you talked to Mike Geis at all?
Yeah, I have.
He knows about.
Yeah, yeah, right, and I know he's done a lot, but he, I know he owns an EV, there's a few other people in town that have EVs, that, I mean, it would be good to get kind of, I guess, a pulse for what a good recommendation would be to go along with this. But I'm happy to have, you know, Green Mountain, okay, if Green Mountain Power rep come out and talk about it too.
I think we should throw it out to Nate.
Yeah.
And be part of that, what Nate has to say about this if we.
I can send it to him, send him a packet and.
Yeah, see what he says.
See what he thinks.
And there's a whole, this is all available on the website, including the application process.
Okay, so I guess we could do a little research on it and see what, what, what it's possible, since we are gonna be doing this project.
Did the town receive money for having the charger here?
Well, that, that's the, that's what he, I mean, we need, I, I'd like to know a little bit more of the specifications, but a lot of them are now credit card charged, so if it's on our property, does that, if somebody charges off.
To the town, yeah.
Right, yes, so, I mean, I'm assuming part of that's offsetting the electric.
Cost of the.
Yeah, the cost of the electric itself, but.
And that, my understanding is that, that the town, or whoever owns the station, needs to set the charging rate per kilowatt hour.
Really?
So, yeah.
Maybe, well, there must be a guideline.
There's a guideline, yeah, but.
But, and, and, I thought the whole purpose of.
If you own a charging station, you set what you want.
I'm gonna put one in tomorrow.
So, so for example, most charging. So, so for example, most charging stations charge somewhere between thirty-eight and sixty cents. Whereas at home, you can do it for about eighteen cents.
So it gives you an idea of.
Yep.
Okay. So, so apart, I think it's a good idea. Tom Page just got one, so, I mean, you know, I don't know. But it's, it's the future that they're saying.
There's going to be people who want to park here and are traveling through, I see a little more of that.
Which isn't necessarily a bad thing. I mean, I think now you get, you get someone who's charging, they're using the wifi or they're, they're here charging and now they walk down and they're checking out the library.
Of course, if they're on the rail trail and going biking or walking or something, it's even better, but we don't really.
Well, that needs to be within, you know, the site. Things around it, around it, there's so much, a year or something.
Parking lot, with the parking lot in the park.
Year around, there must be at least one point five hours worth of.
Good, what a good idea.
Um, so two, two things, just reading here from the timeline standpoint is uh, we have until twenty twenty-six to file an application. And if the application's approved, we have to do the work within twelve months. So, I mean, that's perfect.
I guess, yeah. And having somebody come from Green Mountain Power, it would give us some more idea.
Yeah.
How, how popular it is, how, you know, is this money going to go quickly and that kind of thing.
Yep.
Um, and.
They not got Mike, if Mike got, is he wanting to get involved in this at all?
Mike Geis?
Yeah.
Um, he knows about it and I talked about it today. Um, he said he couldn't be here tonight because he had, he had a conflict with another meeting. Um, I suspect he, I don't want to speak for him, but I think, I know.
Yeah, cause he usually, he's in on stuff and.
I know, he's supportive of, I'm sure he is supportive of it. I do know he's written quite a few grants for the town already.
I know, but I mean, I would like him to.
And this one is crap. Look at the, reviewed it online. The, the initial kind of outline that they asked for is not very detailed at all. Nothing like what he wrote for the, you know, internet.
So what we like, we really like is when like somebody like yourself comes in here and you're like, so this is what we got. And I'll write the grant and then, um, yeah, go ahead. That's good.
Do you have, you have a board meeting in two weeks?
Yep.
Do you want me to see?
Yep, that'd be great.
For you on power.
That'd be good.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, me three weeks.
That would be great. Yeah, and we'll work on this a little bit, so maybe we can add back to the agenda some talk about, uh, the charging.
Yeah.
Anything else for open to public and?
I just wanted to report that, um.
Thank you.
The last music in the park with, um, currently blood that was up there in the gym. Jazzy's fund funded it or fundraised for it. They received thirteen hundred dollars.
Oh, good.
With that event. It was a lot of people. It was really great.
It seemed like it was well attended. I don't.
Yeah, I think it was like, they think like two hundred people.
Was it really?
I mean, I don't know. It was tough, but food traffic good.
Yeah.
So, it was pretty exciting.
Yeah.
I wish it was in the park, but it was.
You know, it'd have been, it'd have been busy. It goes at the park.
Yeah, right.
Having it in the gym, I think, kind of centralized everything, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to report that.
Yeah.
That was good. Hello, that's great.
Um, I had a request from one of the community garden members just to be, uh, captain of the loop on a drainage issue. Yeah.
Just.
No, just the, the drainage project.
Oh, okay.
They just didn't want to, not that they heard something or feared something, they just didn't want to like walk out there and have everything dug up and, and not be told about it. I said, I don't believe that's part of the plan anywhere else.
Okay.
Just pass that.
Pretty sure we, we know pretty much everybody on that.
Yeah.
Right.
They're probably in the loop.
Man, I don't think they're touching on it.
No, and, and I had told the person, Alyssa, that. When it went in, the idea was there'd all be raised beds in case they do move.
Right, right.
Or anything, but they just asked.
Yeah, they'll come around to that wall and all that.
Yeah, I got it. Go around that way. I don't think anything.
Public. Um, I, I want to, I just want to make a quick statement, um, about social media. So, um, I have noticed on, um, a particular social media page related to the town of Groton, that there's been a lot of complaints about, um, and, and in my opinion, unfounded complaints about, um, the use of the public park and the gazebo. Um, there were comments that were made that, that the town should tear it up and tear it all down. Um, and I think that, you know, one, that there's a big mischaracterization of, of the people, residents that are, that are utilizing those on a more regular basis than others. Um, I, I think, um, I, I think that those areas, especially the gazebo and our, and our park are, um, they're, they're important parts of our community. Um, I think that if, um, someone wants to mischaracterize what, um, someone's doing in the park, maybe they should stop and talk to them and see who they are and meet, meet those people. Uh, cause I, I have seen some of those people and I'm sure you have, and they're, I don't, I, it doesn't seem like they're doing anything illegal or.
They're using the park. They're, they're using Z B O. And they're picking up their trash and they're not causing any harm or any problems.
Yeah, I, I would also say that there were some comments made, um, again, I'm, I'm just going to keep it ambiguous, but there were some comments made uh, that, you know, the police don't care about things and the town, um, government doesn't care about things. And I would say, um, you know, for folks that are watching this on TV or the folks that are here, people that read the minutes, um, I, I think this government, this, this town government cares a whole heck of a lot about this town. Um, not just from making sure that we're doing things from a financially responsible perspective, but trying to make this place, this, this town of Groton a, a, a nice place for people to visit, a nice place, place for people to live. And I think that those people that are on those social media sites, um, are people that don't come to these meetings. And I think if they have, if they have a complaint or an issue or a concern or want something, come see us, come to, come to a board meeting, participate in the town government because I think it's most important, um, for us to continue to improve, uh, you know, what Groton's about.
Yep, absolutely.
So that's, that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you, Zach. Okay.
Well said, Zach.
So, anything else on public open? Okay, so, uh, town speed signs moved to state roads. Have we done any more? We haven't heard back. We have never got another study thing either. They brought that.
From that sign.
Yeah, so I'll check in with, um.
Gee, thanks.
I can check in with the sheriff's department, see if we can get that and then start.
About wanting to see them a little more.
Uh, Dan said that they were, um, they've been here, they've been up by the cemetery too.
Oh, good.
Stopping.
I just haven't seen them in a week.
Yeah, so that's.
Yeah, they're beyond the cemetery.
Oh, good.
So I'll check in with them. Um, and the balls, we already talked about in the gym, set agenda for the next meeting. It's going to stay the same. I'm assuming we're going to add, uh.
Open bids for the, for the group project hopefully.
Well, hopefully, I'm, I'm, I'm not.
Put it on there.
Yeah, okay, and then, um, is there anything else that?
The E V stuff.
The E V stuff.
Um, we just got to pick dates. We got to go with dates.
Okay, so twenty-seventh?
The twenty, September twenty-seventh is the next one.
Yep.
And then the next one is, um, October fourth, which is the week of foliage and this room is usually occupied.
So we need to move that around.
That, so I was thinking October eleventh.
Okay, but it's fine with me. What do you do? Is that, what do you guys think?
Uh, what'd you say?
That's the following week, so the.
October eleventh.
That the fourth be eleven.
Yep, and then the twenty-fifth?
Yep.
Okay. And then, since we're planning and we're looking at the calendar that far out, when are we doing, uh?
Eleven.
The eleven?
Oh, that's on the first day of hunting, but what the heck?
What'd you say? Oh, budget day?
Um, I can't do it on the twelfth. I'm, I'm, I've got a, and then I got to go to Bradford.
That's a Sunday.
And I'm out of town the third, the fourth and the fifth. Yeah, I know it's a Sunday.
Oh, right. I'm not doing it on a Sunday.
I gotta go, I gotta go Pittsburgh the fourth and the fifth.
I mean, if you want to do.
Eleven is fine.
Eighteenth.
Or the eighteen.
What do you think? The budget day.
That's the Saturday.
Oh, budget day, that's where we're on?
Fourth of November.
Since we're, since we're looking at the calendar.
Yeah, I have it on the agenda.
What's October?
The twenty-fourth of December.
Twenty-eighth?
Yeah, you can be here alone.
I'm okay with the eighteen, the eighteen.
Uh.
So that's the Saturday before Thanksgiving. Is somebody, anyone gone the whole week of Thanksgiving?
Yeah, probably be trucking trees.
School is out?
Trucking. Yeah, I think we may.
Just as like you do with trees.
Yeah, it would be better to do it on the eleventh if we can have Tristan.
Yep.
Be better.
December second?
December second. I would know better than that. I don't like it any better than that.
December second is Saturday?
Yes.
Yeah. Statistically speaking, more people get here on the first two day of hunting season than the rest of the season.
See the hunting season, they're trying to hunt when they can, but that's.
Do you need a Friday?
Do you do it on?
Just tag out Friday, yeah.
Yeah, sometimes. I would, December second would be fine with me, but.
You don't think you're home trees?
I'll be done by then.
Oh.
So the eleventh, third, second.
Second's fine. Move out of here.
What do you?
You guys both want the second, that's fine with me.
December second, so.
Just November is.
Okay.
That's just a really, the least you thought of, that's a pretty tight timeline for.
To get everything done.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying, November is messy for me.
Yeah.
December.
November, December is better.
Okay. The day after my birthday.
I don't know what my tree schedule is yet, so I just know that it could be a mess.
People might think they need to get their budgets in by the eleventh so they'll get their acting together, so they'll have it really given to them by December.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, our, our meetings in November will still be, we'll be back on the first and the third.
Well, Thanksgiving was that the third?
Yeah.
November first and fifteenth.
Yeah, the first and fifteenth. It's a, or a.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.